The Library Board of Trustees Meeting on Tuesday, January 16th. We'll begin with the call to order.
Pledge?
Oh, and pledge.
Thank you.
Sorry. Roll.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic which stands under its rule of sovereignty and justice for all.
Alright. Alright, so let's do roll call.
It's crowded.
Good evening, members of the Board of Trustees. We are lacking a chair and vice chair, but I'll go the roll call for the rest. Trustee Shibunka.
That would be me.
Trustee Das Magboal.
Present.
In the acting role of Chair this evening, or President. And Trustee Lex.
Sure.
Absent are Vice President Encarnacion and President Gallion.
Okay. Let's have, move on to the approval of the agenda.
I move that the agenda be approved.
I'll second.
Approval of minutes from the November seventeen, two thousand and fifteen meeting?
Move that the minutes be approved?
I did review them. I, yeah, I'll second it.
Just to back up, just so we're procedurally correct, we had a motion and a second for the approval of the agenda, but you didn't say whether you...
Oh, okay.
So, all those in favor?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright, seeing none opposed, now we'll move on to the approval of the minutes.
Okay. Now we can move on to the approval of minutes.
Move to approve the minutes.
I will second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Again, you didn't vote.
Oh, aye.
Alright, alright, so just for the record, for the record, that motion carried on a three, zero vote.
So, we'll move on to the Director's Report.
Yeah, and it looks like we're gonna have a fairly brief meeting because there's not a lot there, there. I did speak to the project manager for the Ceremony Library upstairs bathroom that we all very anxiously are awaiting. The design work is scheduled to be one hundred percent completed by the architect on January twenty ninth. The good news, it's completed today, but that's just the design. It's gotta go through its review, and the next step would then put it out to bid, and then construction. So they don't have a firm schedule yet, but I know there's a lot of pressure to get this particular project done this fiscal year because the money's been carried over from a Measure A grant from several years ago, so we are hoping that, you know, maybe with all the wet weather, there's some hungry contractors out there that'll give us a nice bid and get it going. I brought a copy that frankly, I didn't find very useful to a late person, it's in microscopic print, but if you wanna pass it around. Essentially, there's two things happening. One, the front exterior doors will be automatic doors.
Oh, nice.
So people can get in and out along with the debris and wind and everything else, but it's to make it a little bit more accessibility or friendly, more accessible is the word, actually, yes. And then the bathroom itself, the footprint from the bathroom is gonna come out about four feet into the library.
Oh, really?
Yes, but to make room for the accessible stalls and sinks and such. So, it'll be just a reminder, if people are at home watching, and also for the board. It's gonna be disruptive, for sure, because that bathroom is right when you enter the library, and it will probably be closed for a minimum of three weeks. We anticipate they will, you know, if you've ever been to a Macy's, when they're doing remodel, they put that plastic sheeting down to isolate it, so, you know, there's not dust and stuff. But they will be working during business hours, and then, you know, maybe some noise conflicts with the library. The only alternative is to close during construction, and it's such a long project that we're gonna suck it up and hope that we can survive.
Can't we find some people who need to do demolition and then we can do an after-hours and take the sledgehammers?
The press for lever.
Yeah.
I've never done a home remodel, not, not...
Yeah, demolition goes very fast.
Yeah.
Yeah, every one I know that's done a home bathroom remodel or kitchen remodel, it always lasts much longer than you think, and it's always much more disruptive than you ever imagined. But we will survive, and no doubt. Probably, the secondary concern is that, you know, people that really need to use the restroom while they're visiting the library. For now, the plan is actually having to go across to the Gallagher Clubhouse, which is a short walk across the parking lot. The alternative for that was to bring in portables on a trailer, and I forget if the cost was an incredible cost, and they would have to be pumped several times a week.
And they would take precious parking slots.
And there would be, yeah, so we kinda weighed the benefits and the cost cutting into the project that's already got a margin, it's hairline thin, so, anyway. Any questions about that? Yeah, I don't have more information, I wish I did, and I suspect at our February meeting, we're gonna be in about the same place, other than they will have probably accepted the one hundred percent design, but I don't anticipate they're gonna be bringing it out to bid that soon, but I...
When would it start, then, maybe?
You know, they don't have a schedule, you know, they're managing a few other projects, you know, here and some of our other facilities, so I don't know where this one lands on the pecking, or other than I have heard it reiterated, that this will get done in the fiscal year, so sometime between now and June, for sure. And we're looking at about a three-week, three-week construction window, so hopefully by the spring, they get it going and have it all done. That would be, that would be great. There is not really a slow time, I would say.
No.
Other than maybe the holiday break, it might have been a good time, but... Anyway, that is that for that item. The next item is the two thousand and fifteen Food for Fines program. Just as a refresher, we talked about this probably at our October meeting, I believe, and we had City Council authorization in November to once again participate in the Food for Fines program. And this is something that started back prior to two thousand and thirteen, we started in two thousand and thirteen, and it looks like the county, Redwood City, and everybody in the county with the exception of San Bruno and Menlo Park participated, so this was sort of a team effort across the peninsula. And Second Harvest Food Bank was the contracted recipient of the food, and just in a nutshell, if people had outstanding overdue book fines, they could bring in non-perishable food items and have their fines expunged, and quite a few people did take advantage of that, and the program ran from November sixteenth through December thirty first. And...
Do we know how many people are the value of the fines?
We had a grand total of three hundred and thirty-four people that took advantage, which is an uptick from the number, last year we had an even three hundred, so, yeah. The fines waived, though, were actually less than last year. Last year, we waived about forty-five hundred dollars in fines, this year was just slightly over four thousand dollars, which is a lot of money in our business, but probably the reality is, a lot of those accounts wouldn't have been touched without this program, so the community definitely benefited. We collected a total of two thousand five hundred and fifteen pounds, if I got my notes right.
And what goes around comes around, you know, so, one good turn.
So, it was a success, I think the folks at Second Harvest are glad, just in double check, my figures, and, yes, two thousand five hundred and fifteen pounds of non-perishable food items, and that was just during the holiday period. And a reminder, we do have food collection bins at Ceremony Library year-round.
And Westlake as well.
And Westlake, I'm sorry. And in the past, you know, our community is a very giving community, which probably shouldn't surprise you, but we've been recognized by Second Harvest for a gold award for the generosity of the community supporting Second Harvest Food Bank through donations at the library year-round, not just during the Food for Fines program.
Go Daly City.
Any questions?
No, that's good.
We anticipate, we'll probably talk about this again in October. Looks like there's some momentum here, and interest in the libraries across the county is growing. It started with two libraries, and now it's all but two. So, we'll talk about it again in November and probably be participating again through the holiday season in two thousand and sixteen.
Super.
Yep. Good job.
You have to ask me some questions, and this meeting is gonna be, gonna be a world record. I am, at this point, gonna turn the microphone over to Chayla Anderson, who's gonna talk about our statistical report for the second quarter.
Indeed, just the latest numbers, the same statistics that we've been looking at. Library visits, of course, as you know, we have the security gates at all four locations, and they do track traffic in and traffic out, and so, this is a, it's a quarter period, three months, so there is a variability that, you know, it looks like significantly down at Ceremony, which is interesting. We did have some technical difficulties that could account for quite a bit of that. People keep disconnecting the security gates, and by people, I mean small children, toddlers.
Am I?
So I'd like to think that that was probably part of what went wrong there. And you'll see that it's stayed pretty stable at the other locations, and Westlake's a very, very busy branch, and then proportionally, you know, as you know, John Daly and Bayshore tend to be much smaller.
I'm happy to see John Daly and Bayshore went up, even if it was just a little bit.
A little bit, yeah.
It's nice, it's good.
Absolutely. And this is comparing it to the same three-month period last year, because there is seasonal fluctuations as well. This is new patrons, and I will tell you, I was on the desk at several different locations today, and definitely issued a lot of new library cards. It's a popular service, and it's always a, really one of the more joyful ones to be able to welcome somebody to the library and give them a card and explain all the fabulous things that they can do with their new card, not just borrow books, but access our online resources and take advantage of Discover and Go and services like that. I made a note, these are actually library cards that were issued within the branches. We do have online registration, they do need to come into the library to complete it, and I thought it might be of interest. The librarian who's responsible for handling those, each month he'll go in, and ones that were, that were left and not completed, get purged, and he's found generally that there's about a thirty, thirty-four percent completion rate. You get a lot of duplicate, it's online, I think sometimes are kids, and so there's no vetting at that point, so when it comes to us, we do, we check, make sure there isn't an existing account, and then when and if they come in, we complete it and they issue them their card.
Do reminders go out, that you have an application in suspense?
They do not, to my knowledge. It would be, it would have to be an automated process, and I'm not, I'm not gonna inquire, though. Circulation, always one of our important numbers, checkouts and renewals, actually, and overall, down just slightly, I don't know if it's statistically significant, but four point six two percent from the prior year. Our portion that were self-checkouts did climb slightly, it tends to hover around fifty percent. Some branches definitely, Ceremony, for example, and I don't know if it's the location or just how the layout of the library is, or the people that come in, but that tends to have a higher proportion of self-checkout, and Bayshore always has, by far, the highest.
I was, it doesn't look like an optical illusion, it looks like they have a little more.
The percentage of self-check is really, yeah, much higher there.
Good, good.
Circulation of e-materials went up, and I'm very happy to see this, because spending on e-materials went up as well, so it's nice to see that you stood. I think a big part of this is, you know, it's not new, new, but it's still relatively new, and the important thing for having an attractive collection of either physical or e-materials is to have a good selection and to have multiple copies of those items that are most popular, and this is not something that Daly City's doing on our own, in fact, there's a system-wide group that does the ordering for this, and they've, as a team, we've pooled a lot more funds to put into the e-resources, or specifically the ebooks. So hopefully, you'll continue to see that go up, and just in general, I think more people adopt that, it's very convenient. The online subscription usage went up, and I was very happy to see that, because it had taken, the last time we went over this, a bit of a nosedive. I think it just, it does fluctuate quite a bit, so just looking at this little window maybe is not, so it provides so much insight, I don't know.
Before we advance...
Yes.
I was disconcerted by this slide, because I saw the two bars, and then I saw two point two, two point two-one percent.
Yeah.
And I was just thinking, you know, the prior slide, circulation of e-materials shows proportional difference, this is far out of proportion, and I was thinking that we should try to graphically indicate the proper proportion relationship and not, you know, just capture the last part, you know, of the, what shall I say?
It makes it look like it's a dramatic, yeah, when it's not.
I mean, that looks like much more, it looks like over fifty percent.
Bursts my bubble.
Well, I'm just happy it went up, and not down.
Well, I am too, but...
Okay, I will look into, I, yeah, used Excel, so I can see what went into that, and try and make them more graphically representative of reality. Public computer use, that one surprised me a little bit, that Ceremony had gone down. We did change our system for printing and time management. It offers a session, an extension, so if there are a certain percentage of computers available, it will, or, I'm sorry, if there is no one waiting for the particular computer you're using, it will allow you to extend, and so that would just be a single session, so that could account for at least some of that. It doesn't feel like it's, I mean, just anecdotally, it's, you know, I was over there assisting people earlier today, and it wasn't completely full, but there were people in most of the seats happily using the computers, so...
That's really a nice feature, though, to allow people to stay on, you know, on the machine longer if there's no demand.
Mm-hmm, absolutely, yeah, we were very happy to get that feature.
I wonder if a tiny bit of the down is the weather? We finally had some good storms in December, which is almost...
Well, I will tell you, today, you know, things like storytime, you know, you don't get the same turnout when it's pouring down rain, that's for sure, so that could be a factor as well. It's also just kinda looking at a small window. Wireless went up significantly, so there you go, maybe, that people are getting their own computers and coming in rather than using ours, which is much more convenient, I can see why people would choose to do that. So you saw, it went up quite a bit at Ceremony and John Daly.
Yeah.
And we, the way that our network is configured now, we can also track individual users, which is very nice, and you can see, it's a lot of people that are making use of that. Public programs, so on the left side, you'll see the total count of programs, and then on the right side, you'll see attendance at those programs, and I wanna give credit, well, to all the staff who've been participating and really working on bringing up the number of programs, diversifying what we're offering, and, but particularly, our Youth Services librarian, Barbara Daniels, is just all out, working towards getting more programs at all the locations, and really making those ones that have a wide appeal, she had, for a lot of the programs around the holidays, she had a really quite astonishing turnout.
That's, yeah, really impressive.
Yeah, it was a nice big leap there, now we have to sustain it. It's a lot going on, which is good, that's what we want, we want a lot of activity, so... Yeah, this one, I think, we're very, very pleased, so we're gonna sustain this. And, oh, that was the end of it. Any questions, other than the comment about the chart? I will see what Excel has to say for itself.
Okay, thanks, yeah.
No, it's...
That way I won't have to do a double take.
Yeah, no, it's definitely misleading.
It's positive.
Yes, it is a positive trend, though. And there's a, as I said, I mean, you know, there's just natural variation, and sometimes it's hard to differentiate what is, you know, just gonna be happenstance versus a trend, so... Any questions?
Thank you for that.
Absolutely.
Should we move to the Trustees' Report?
Anything to report?
Well, actually, I guess I can report that I met with Chayla and Joseph on the newsletter from last year. We talked about the various things that we might comment on. There were a number of areas that were likely candidates. Chayla sent to me on Friday afternoon an email with a lot of statistical information that I haven't been able to really digest and translate into newsletter form, but I will be working on that, and hopefully, there will be a draft of that in the near future.
Excellent.
Yeah.
Yeah. Since this is the Director's Report section, I was wondering, this isn't a trustee report as much as a trustee question, but I continue to hear that the City Council has directed the staff to look into the possible closure of the Westlake branch as a budget measure.
Did you hear we're closing it on March first? That's the other part of that rumor.
No, no.
Oh, well...
Thank you for bringing that up, if you'll indulge me for a couple of seconds here, I'll respond to that.
Okay, please, thank you.
That's not true, that there was never a direction to look at closing Westlake Library. To give you some context, this goes back several months ago, when the council continues to struggle with Daly City's structural deficit, and will continue probably for the next few years to grapple with that. So there was a study session, I was not present, so I can't report firsthand, but what I understand was, when they were talking about possible means to narrow that gap in the budget structural deficit, the question was asked of the council, would you consider closing a fire station to achieve savings? Would you consider closing a library? I don't believe Westlake Library was ever specifically mentioned, I think it was in more of a conceptual sense, a philosophical sense, would these be something you would consider to get to where we need to be? And the council, again, I wasn't there, but my understanding was, there was a long pause, and they said, well, we won't say no, but we would, we're curious what that would look like, you know, so, so the exercise wasn't to find out what Westlake Library would look like closed, but rather, just to reinforce, this is the cost of our library system. I don't know that it's gonna go any farther than that, I mean, that was several months ago. We will be heading into the budget session for the next two fiscal years, those, that should start within the next few weeks, with council just having some discussions from February through May, before, probably mid to late June, adopting another two-year budget. I'll be honest, I will be shocked if part of that budget includes closing a library or a fire station.
Yeah.
You know, I don't have a crystal ball, but I would be very, very surprised. But that hasn't stopped, I was, a random citizen approached me last week and said, how can you close Westlake Library? I've had a card there for fifty-two years.
Oh, my gosh.
And I said, where did you hear that? He said, well, you heard it at the library. So, Chayla and I probably need to do some internal...
Yeah.
I didn't hear it at the library, actually, you know, heard it through City Council members.
Oh.
And the reason, the rationale that accompanied, I'll call it the study of the savings, should that branch be closed, is that it also, two things, actually, first of all, it's not tied to a rec program, which the other three libraries are, and that it's a leasable facility, which would not only produce savings, but produce income. You know, I think this is something that we really need to stay on top of and be aware of the city council's and the staff's thinking, to the extent possible, so...
And if, again, indulge me for a second.
Sure.
The prospect of leasing that space is almost zero. It would be, it would be subject to parking requirements, unless we leased it to another library and didn't change the use of the building, if the use of that building were changed to anything other than the library, my understanding is, the parking requirements would kick, there is no off-street parking there, so it couldn't meet the requirements. And the only alternative, then, would be if somebody had a lot of money and wanted to tear it down and start over and build something, you know, that included parking maybe on the ground floor, so...
Let's just sound it a little more like, you know, this is something that we're gonna look at, no commitments have been made, you know, no decisions have been made, but we have asked to have this information brought back to us, which...
But to clarify, that was the cost of all libraries, not Westlake in particular. I mean, if you're hearing something different from a council member, I haven't, but...
Actually, three different members, so...
Okay.
Yeah, not to pick on any one.
That's not, that's not the direction that we received, was to just put together the cost of all four branches, what that looks like, so...
So only the fire and only the library were brought up as potential?
I was not at that meeting, but I understand those questions were asked, to gauge, you know, the threshold of pain that the council would be willing to suffer, you know, I don't wanna make light of the fact that the structural deficit is serious, it's been here for years. At some point, we're gonna have to either go to deeper cuts or some other means of new revenue, even with the prospect of some new sales tax generators coming in at Ceremony, and some new property tax coming in from the development at the former Christopher Columbus School, and I don't know if you've seen all the construction taking place up at the top of the hill, there's new housing coming on...
Oh, yeah.
Up there. I'm forgetting the developer, it's Lennar is the one that is Crestview, I can't, maybe KB, KB Homes is doing some homes up on the top. So we're definitely getting influx of new revenues, and God knows that the price of real estate in the Bay Area, including Daly City, is going through the roof, so I assume as those properties are sold, that's not gonna hurt the city's revenues, in fact, the homes at the former Christopher Columbus site, I hear are selling for one point four million dollars and up, so property tax on that, assuming people didn't bring their Prop-13 shield with them, will be fairly substantial, so... Also, the sales tax is looking up, although, you know, with the way the stock market's been the last two weeks, who knows what the future holds, but if you're extremely curious, I was gonna save this, but it seems like a good segue, this Thursday, in this very room, will be the mayor's annual State of the City address, and I'm sure some of those issues will be covered in that speech.
What time is that, Joseph?
I believe the scheduled time is from eleven-thirty AM to one-thirty PM. And there's usually some milling about, you know, I don't know that they've ever started right at eleven-thirty. And if, it's free, it's open to the public, and you can RSVP directly to the Chamber of Commerce, who sponsors the event every year.
In the chambers?
Yeah, it alternates between Daly City and Colma, because it's the Daly City-Colma Chamber of Commerce.
Right.
This year, Daly City is hosting.
I thought we had visitors, I mean, we do have visitors, but I...
That's Thursday?
Yes, Thursday, January twenty-first, eleven-thirty AM to one-thirty PM, in this very chambers.
Thanks, not for lack of interest, but I think I have a conflict. But, you know, this is the kind of thing that I just feel a very strong interest in and wanna stay on top of, so that if the study produces information that would lead either the staff or the city manager to make a recommendation, or the council to discuss the possibility of a closure, that we have adequate notice of what's going on, as well as information in terms of what the basis of that recommendation is, to provide input.
Absolutely, I promise you that, and I'll go out on a limb here and say the two people sitting at this table aren't making that recommendation. We, you know, you've seen the stats, this is a valuable asset to the community, you know, all four branches, and you saw, you know, Westlake in particular, it's a smallish library, but it does a substantial business, and I know I've run into you there, and you've seen with your own eyes that that's a very... that, that's a very, very popular branch, so.
It has a big impact on the community and it's not such an enormous impact on the budget, so.
You know, in, in ideal world, we, we would be planning for a new Westlake library, I think would, would be, be great. And at that point, you know, surplusing the existing library might, might be an option, but I, I guess we need to stay tuned. I, I can't overstep my authority, but like, you know, I don't, I'm, I wanna be honest with you. I, I would be very surprised if six months from now, we were looking at closing one of our libraries.
Right, well, thank you for bringing this up today.
Yes.
That alone, though, I don't think will, will stop the rumors. And we're, we're hearing them too. And, and I thought the most interesting one was that it was happening March first. Where do these things come from, I don't know? But it sounds like there's different people saying different things. And unlike trustee Lex, I haven't actually had a discussion with any council members on this subject, so I, you may have a better sense of where they are than I do. But just to clarify, the direction wasn't to present a picture of Westlake Library, it was the entire system, so.
That was an eye-opener.
It was, didn't mean, didn't mean shock.
No, 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 that's okay. It's good to know.
Announcements and communication before from Daly City Library.
I was asked by Susan Brizden Smith to let us all know that we'll have something to report next month.
And you did an excellent job of that.
Thank you, sir.
Did you wanna highlight some of our upcoming events? I brought, I brought a couple of flyers. I did bring a couple of flyers for some events right around the corner, including as soon as next week, a week from tomorrow, the Get Coffee Savvy at Your Library event is coming to the John Daly Library, where you can learn to brew coffee in several different ways and taste the results. That is Wednesday, January twenty-seventh, six PM at the John Daly Library. For those who are caffeine-sensitive in the evening, maybe have some, some options.
Is this decaf coffee we're gonna brew?
And I don't know if you, you got? Oh, there's only three of you, sorry. There's a couple extras there, give to your friends and family. And also, it's, it's that time of year, Chinese New Year is right around the corner. And also, this, I don't know, I'm favoring John Daly Library tonight, but at the John Daly Library, they will be celebrating Chinese New Year by making lanterns. And that is Wednesday, February third, six PM at the John Daly Library. Wednesday's at six PM, seeming to be the happening time at the John Daly Library.
Indeed, they are. They're very busy.
Two weeks in a row, ooh.
Thanks.
I don't have any.
So, we, we have a new schedule coming out shortly for ID Lab programs at the Ceremony Library and we'll be hosting, and once again, a partnership with Phase Two Careers and Renaissance Entrepreneur Center, a series of workshops for those interested in starting small businesses at the Westlake Library. So, stuff ongoing, you can go to dailycitilibrary.org/events.
Slash?
Events.
Events.
Any public comments?
Kids?
Before we adjourn, I didn't want to neglect the fact that we have, for several months now, talked about a Brown Act session, which.
Bring that up under agenda building.
I, I, I was hoping this would actually take place next week. I think that, that's kinda short notice, but I did, I've talked to the attorneys about it. They, they have the presentation prepared because they've given it to the Arts and Culture Commission. Problem is, we've, we're short an attorney and their workload after the new year went through the roof. So, I haven't confirmed that they will be there, but I can either try to keep that one on track or if you wanna pick another day, we, we were looking initially at next Tuesday at six o'clock, but we can certainly reschedule it. Don't think we're, we were gonna meet upstairs in the city manager's office.
This would be Tuesday, the twenty-sixth?
Yes, yes.
That's a week from today, yes.
Six o'clock?
That was the plan, but like I said, I haven't gotten confirmation and I will pursue that if, if that looks like something promising or we'll, we'll happily defer it to, you know, maybe early, early February.
I hate to keep deferring it if we can, you know, settle on Tuesday.
Do we know when Arlen is, will you back?
Do not know. Arlen is still not in the country.
Oh, I was not aware of that.
I only found out today.
Since her absence tonight. I was just thinking, you know, as probably the longest-serving member of the board and perhaps the most experienced, you know, if, if she were not able to attend.
She's had previous opportunities.
Perhaps we could just go ahead with it.
Okay, all right, I will, I will keep you, hopefully I'll have an answer by tomorrow.
That works for me, if it.
I'll cancel my book club night. No, I can make it. This is more important.
It's, and it's assuming the same level of engagement as there was at the Arts and Culture Commission, probably about a, a thirty-minute presentation and, you know, maybe another ten, fifteen minutes of discussion.
Yeah, that's good.
We'll have you out before seven because at seven, we have the Recreation Commission meeting. Any other bending, agenda-building items?
Not that I can think of right now.
Just a request to keep us updated on the general budget discussions.
Oh, absolutely.
And of course, the library in particular.
The finance director just released a tentative schedule. I will forward those dates to you, to remind me not to forget them.
For the meetings?
Yeah.
Good, thanks.
I'm gonna say middle of May into June. He's, he's looking pretty far out for the meetings, but you can get him on your calendar.
One thing that I passed out was a card I received, Rod, you've got it, sent over the holidays by the Arts and Culture, is that?
Yes, yeah.
Culture and Arts.
I, I was not on, on the list, so I didn't actually see that card until this evening, but.
So, I thought it was nice that they sent something out.
Just, I'm curious, did all of you get the card?
I did. And I thought it was very artistic and the library needs an artistic person to.
I'll, I'll find out what mailing list they used. That didn't include me, but.
Probably just Daly Cityite, huh?
I think we need greeting cards for Happy National Library Week.
When is that?
It's in April.
Is it still a week, it's not a month?
It's just a week.
Yes, well, I assumed that this was done because they're a brand-new addition to our commissions, rather than something that would be on a regular basis.
I'll, I'll get the back where I suspect somebody volunteered to do it and. And it looks like they used the mailing list of boards and commissions, maybe?
It appears that city funds were used for postage.
Does it have a stamp?
Yes, it does.
It came out of a.
Oh, the meter?
Yeah.
It did?
And return address is office of the city manager.
Okay, interesting. We'll have to do a better card next year. But don't tell the Recreation Commission.
We can do it as a, an ID Lab. A Maker Lab for cards.
So, there's no public comment, meeting adjourned?
So, moved.
Oh, moved to?
Moved to adjourned?
Moved to adjourned?
I'll second.
All in favor?
All in favor?
We're adjourned. Congratulations.